City Council meeting is called to order.
Roll call for the city council meeting of Wednesday, August 1st, 2018 at 9:00 a.m. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance. Yes.
During our moment of silence, if we could remember, State Representative Flo Fabrizio, who passed away, he served the city of Erie for 16 years as our state representative for the west side of Erie, and on his passing, we also remember those who survived him, his wife, Vicki, and his stepchildren, Matt and Anthony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of July 18th, 2018, and bills for payment on July 27th and August 3rd, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. We're not having the media report?
No, it's at the next council meeting.
Okay, alright.
Sorry, I didn't know that was on there.
Sorry, I thought he had told me today.
He may have.
Yeah, I think he did. Okay, so...
He's interviewing chamber CEOs right now.
Oh, that's fine, not a problem. Sonia, we're not going to have the media report, so we'll go to repository sales.
Are there any repository sales? State your name and address and the property that you're acquiring.
My name is Gordon Mitchell. The property address is 406 Newman Street. Anything else?
What would you be doing with the property?
I plan on building a two-bedroom house there for my sister.
What was the address of the property?
406 Wilson.
406 Wilson.
That's the lot number, the lot.
Madam President.
Yes.
Sir, do you own any of the adjacent properties, or is this just going to be a standalone?
No adjacent, it's a standalone.
Okay, and do you have the financial means to...
Definitely do.
Have it all prepared, contractors, subcontractors?
I haven't done that yet.
Okay.
No.
Any more questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are your current taxes current?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Laurie's just giving the other fellow's ID, he'll be right out.
Okay.
Hey, how you doing?
Good.
I'm at 552 East 13th Street, my name is Christopher Harrison. And I was just trying to revitalize it, possibly turn it into a daycare of some sort, try to create some type of revenue for it, so...
What was the address of the property again?
552 East 13th Street.
Madam President.
Yes.
Is there a...you said you want to turn it into a daycare center, is there a structure on the property already, or would you be building one?
Just revitalizing it, trying to get it turned into, it's a double apartment, so if it doesn't work that way, I'll just try to turn it into a daycare, just trying to bring some type of revenue in for myself and bring it back, you know, the neighborhood. I talked to a couple ladies next door, they're saying that they didn't know if they wanted it tore down, or, you know, somebody to do something with it, so...
Okay, and do you have the...would you be contracting that out, or would you be doing the work, or...
I'll be trying to do little side jobs myself, and anything that's heavy, I would have to, you know, call the electric company, or, you know, somebody come in to really do something, if it needs extensive work.
Okay, and you're prepared to absorb those costs, and...
Correct. Only thing that I was...had a question about, at one time, they said within 60 days, they were talking about tearing it down, I don't know, you know...
Is it on the demolition?
Well, he wanted to, but he said he was asking about Erie County, and, you know, shoe pushing for it himself, so, you know, but I asked him about it, he said anything can be redone, you know.
Gotcha. No further questions.
Madam President.
Yes.
Christopher, did you look into the zoning in that area for a business?
Not yet, I know it had to...that would be a step that I have to take, but I know there was also two storefronts in that area, corner to corner, so I was just guessing, you know, in between, it should be able to be zoned, so I will have to call and see.
Any more questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Pardon?
Your current taxes, are they...your taxes current?
Yeah, I owe, I think, maybe about $1,213 right now currently, and I talked to the lady, and she said it was the first time owner I can go in there and, you know, get that dipped in the butt, so...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, wait a second, hold on.
Yes.
So, you owe back taxes, sir?
Um, some property that got transferred over.
Okay.
And it, you know, all his issues got transferred over, so I'm taking care of it.
And you're taking care of...okay, because I'm not inclined to vote for something if you owe, and why would we give you more if you owe, okay?
It was transferred, so it took over all his debts.
Alright, if you could use your due diligence to take care of that, it would make it easier for me to...
Yes.
Vote for this, to approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more repository sales? Are there any more repository sales? Last call for repository sales. That takes us to citizens to be heard.
My name is Laura Eaton, I live at 1540 West 6th Street, and I own the business on State Street, the Floral Gallery, at 815 State Street. I've been downtown Erie for 35 years now. I started when I was 10. I'm here speaking on...I understand there's been some discussion about people panhandling in downtown Erie. I'm in the trenches, I'm right there. I've had one person from city council come and speak to me, Kathy did, and about the panhandling that goes on. It's bad. I love what's going on on 3rd Street, what Erie Insurance and everybody's doing, and it's about time, we're really doing some really great things, but we have to resolve our panhandling problem. Other cities, and we did send Kathy a picture of what's going on in Atlanta, Georgia, they have big red boxes on their light poles, and instead of you giving money to a panhandler, you drop the dollar in there, that goes to the homeless shelters, that goes to places where they help people get back on their feet. I see people, little old ladies pulling up to go to the Philharmonic, running from their car into the Warner Theater because they're afraid of being stopped for panhandling. I've seen, I've had to go out and help people, ladies trying to get out of their car, where a panhandler will block the door until she rolls down the window and gives him a dollar, and then they open the door. I've seen the same people across the street, close to the Dollar General, that seems to be the hotspot downtown, where the sign is, "I'm pregnant, I'm homeless," you know, I see this girl about every three or four months with her sign out there, she's very unkept. Mecca, I work at Mecca, I'm the executive director there for over 30 years, we have over 290 families that we help take care of, so they're not homeless. These people get SSI, or SSDI, or they're veterans, or they're fiduciaries. We make sure the first of the month that their rent is paid, their bills are paid, and then they get a weekly spending check so that they're not on the street panhandling. The last time I read the statistics, 97% of the homeless people in most communities either get SSI, or SSDI, or veterans' money, and they spend their money on the first, or the third, or the fifth of the month, doing drugs and alcohol, and then they're broke the rest of the month, they come back to the community, and they're begging for money again. That's not helping these people. What we need to do is help our homeless shelters, help them get first...GCAC has a great program for security deposits and first month's rent. Maybe we have to help them get more funds to help more people, so that we can get them off the street. These people do need help, yes, I agree with that 100%, but I watch them, across the street, they collect money until they go down to the bar on the corner, and they come out with a bag. So, what did we do to help them? We didn't feed them, we just bought them alcohol. So, we need to do something. Other cities are really trying to take care of this problem, of panhandling, and I agree 100%, there should be an ordinance against them. We need to let the citizens know, don't feed these people money, give to the homeless shelters, give to places that can help these people. Giving them money does not help them, that just encourages their drug and their alcohol problems. If they were going into the Dollar General and buying food after they collected that money, that would be one thing, but you don't see them going in there and coming out with bags. We watch it every day in downtown Erie. We are building such a great community right now. What's happening in downtown is a...I've been here a long time, since the Transway Ball, and it is now turning around, and we're getting something wonderful, but our reputation for homeless people...there was a young man, probably looked like he was around 30, dirty, whatever, sat right down on the corner of 10th and State Street the other day with a sign, right in the corner, asking people for money. We gotta stop it somehow. Other cities are doing it, Erie, Pennsylvania's a smaller community, we should be able to handle this kind of a situation. There's too much intelligence up here not to let...come up with a remedy for this, and I like, and you can share with them the picture that we sent you, the...it's a thing to try. We need to try something besides saying, "Let's give these homeless people more money." We don't want to do that. We want to get them food, clothing, and shelter, and the first thing they need to do is find a place to live, and that's what we need to concentrate on. You know, it's very hard, Erie's rents are really high. We have 290 families that we have to help find apartments for, it's a lot of money to get an apartment in Erie, so we need to do something to help, and I'm willing to sit on a committee, willing to help do whatever. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's John Lilly. I just wanted to speak maybe on some of the similar issues that she was talking about for, like, homeless people, and maybe even a little bit about some of them, I think some of them are on probation and stuff, and I don't know if they're just getting out of halfway houses, or in drug rehabs, or they're just trying to find a home plan, but yeah, they're downtown a lot, they're harassing women all the time, they're always begging people for change, they're approaching people when they come out of work, when they go to work, you know, and they're not really homeless, they're just like, on probation in halfway houses, trying to like, get on their feet, some of them are from this town, some are from out of town, and, I mean, they're technically homeless, but they're not homeless people, and like, they're causing some of these problems she's talking about too, in addition to some of the homeless people, she's saying, but, and also, I don't know, I went to court, and I got, I don't know, I got in trouble for something, and I got in trouble for the same exact thing. The first time, I didn't get anything, the second time, somehow, it meant a different thing, I don't understand how that happens, then some of my time didn't get credited, I don't know how that happened, then, and all I get from the court system and the police is, "Oh, whoops, we messed up." I understand that, you know, that happens, but they never fix it, I'm like, "Okay, I'm fine with you messing up, can you fix it?" And they're like, "We don't know what to do." And they can, they can fix it. Now, I have one case that was turned over by Superior Court, which was totally unnecessary, I mean, you can fix it after it's messed up, like, I understand that, you know, sometimes stuff gets charged or misconstrued, we just ask people to fix it, they don't when they can, it's like, you can. So, I don't understand how that keeps happening without getting changed, nobody's trying to retaliate or attack anybody for it, or, you know, like, fight with anybody, they just want it to get fixed, they don't want anybody to get fired, or anything like that, they're just trying to ask to fix the problem after it's found out it was a mistake, and that seems to be unheard, and we're kind of confused, more than like, angry or violent, we're just like, it can be fixed, but it never gets to that for some reason. But it seems like, it seems like mostly like homeless people that aren't from around here, that are on probation, that get targeted for this kind of thing, because they come around here, and maybe they don't know all the laws and stuff, so, they kind of, it's more of a neglect thing, it's like, "Oh, we're not going to pay attention to him when he wants something fixed, because, you know, it doesn't keep being an issue," it's kind of like, not necessarily somebody purposely pushing him away, honest to God, but it's kind of like, it's not focused on, because the person don't know that much about the law, or they're not from around here, so it kind of, they kind of just get pushed to the back and forgotten about with an unfixed court case that's messed up, and it's not purposely done, I've noticed that, it's just kind of gets pushed to the back, and the person's screwed, like, what the heck? Anyway, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you.
Morning, Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Several things I want to touch base on. First and foremost, thank you to the councilwoman that gave a great presentation last time on the panhandling issue. That kind of deliberative research and presentation, I was so glad to see it on the YouTube video, so thank you for that, thank you for demonstrating that kind of diligence on an issue. Regarding that specific issue, the panhandling, besides doing the dive in to find out what all's involved, you have great resources in town to help with that, I'm hoping you're tapping into them. You know, we just had a conversation before the start of the meeting, the program that Ms. Eaton talked about, we have a guy who was involved in that program right here, in Chris Friday. Ask him about it, ask him what all was involved, he can give you a ton of information on this. Those kinds of resources we have in town, please, seek them out, tap into them, and let's get these things resolved in a very diligent way. I want to thank councilwomen Schaff and Allen for showing up at the Buffalo Roads Plans Display last night. The PennDOT notice was pretty minimal, the turnout was very light, of course, for those of us that did turnout, it gave us solid conversation time with the people involved in the project, but I was surprised that those were the only two council people that showed up, that I saw. That's a significant issue for that part of town, and hopefully, there's some kind of follow-up then, with those that didn't show up, so they can get the information on where that project's at. The project nearby, the viaduct, there is still no NEPA resubmission. That's a deal breaker, that's a federal requirement. They did significant changes to the viaduct plan, and they haven't submitted for National Environmental Policy Act approval on those planned changes. And like I've said before, the holdup is that they don't have a design for this miracle transparent wall that they're going to put between the sidewalk and the arterial highway to protect the pedestrians on that 2,000-foot-long walk. So, don't ignore that that is a serious issue with the whole viaduct project. In relative to the panhandling, please, I request that you seek not punitive resolutions to things, but solutions to root causes. The panhandling's one of them, the quality-of-life ticketing proposal, that has a lot of flaws that were brought up in previous council meetings, please, address more for the root causes. A perfect example is right here in city council, the Spoons League. You know, every time I drive by a basketball court that facilitates the Spoons League in the summer, it's a beehive. That is amazing, thank you for continuing that program, that's how you solve these kinds of problems. You don't bust up adolescents that are out doing things because they don't have anything else to do, you give them something else to do. So, beyond that, I just want to give an update, I'm a supporter of the whole CBA issue, there was an announcement last council meeting that Pittsburgh had stalled a large project that UPMC was doing because of lack of proper CBA implementation. Well, that, just within the last day and a half, that project has now been approved. There've been some adjustments, it didn't get approved without some public outcry, so there was still some of that, but it moved the ball forward, so they got a better agreement, and UPMC now moves ahead with their project. That's the kind of thing we need to keep doing here in Erie. The Bayfront Parkway with PennDOT's planning is a perfect example, that plan is constantly changing because they're engaging everybody impacted, and they're adjusting the plan to what those impacts are resulting in for those people. So, let's realize, problem solving isn't overnight, it's deliberative, it takes work, but the outcome is well worth it. Thank you for this time, and looking forward to Lake Erie Cycle Fest Thursday through Sunday, hope to see everybody there at any of those events, either that or the Jazz Fest, it's going to be a great weekend for Erie, thank you.
I always have to lower it. Good morning, my name is Naianna Ames, I live at 947 West 6th Street, and I work at the Mental Health Association, I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator. One of the things, the, what I would like to speak about today is the panhandling, and what I said a couple weeks ago, I'm still going to say again, it is much more than folks standing out there, you know, trying to get a couple dollars. These are folks that I work with every day, they ask for housing, they ask for employment opportunities, I've been able to do a few things for them, but it's a little difficult because, excuse me, because it's just me, so maybe, I have a friend of mine that's coming the end of August, Ben Loudermilk, he's the Director of Housing for the Department of Human Services in Harrisburg, and Ben and I have been talking about things that can happen, maybe when Ben comes on the 30th of August, perhaps you folks might be interested in meeting with him. Okay, you can catch up with me, and we can make that happen. I think this is something that, we can change this here in Erie, we have a lot of services, a lot of folks that are interested, a couple of the employers that I've talked to are also interested. When you send them some folks that show up every day for work, and some things happen in their own lives, the employers are very interested in assisting to make sure that they continue to show up, because it's obvious, they're going to work, they're helping them produce a product or whatever at the individual companies, and if everybody shows up for work, they can get it done. It makes a difference if people show up, it makes a difference if they don't show up, and it has to do with their profit. So, it's easy to get folks that are for-profits to engage, they're willing to do that. Maybe we could meet and decide how we could handle that, okay? Thank you.
Are there any more citizens to be heard? Are there any more citizens to be heard? Last call for citizens to be heard. That takes us to ordinances.
Ordinances for final passage, council file number 15638, official ordinance number 282018, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $42,072 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue, and providing for the expenditure thereof 2017 Justice Assistance Grant. By Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, the council file ordinance bill number 15638, and now known as official file ordinance number 282018, be finally passed by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council pass official file ordinance number 282018, finally by ye seven, nay zero. Ordinances for first reading, council file number 15640, an ordinance of the city of Erie, Erie County, Pennsylvania, authorizing and directing the execution and delivery of a guarantee agreement with the Erie Parking Authority, and compliance with the provisions thereof, approving the issuance by the authority of guaranteed parking revenue bond series of 2018 in an amount not to exceed $2,500,000, repealing all inconsistent ordinances, directing the proper officers of the city to take necessary actions, and further directing that this ordinance shall take effect immediately. By Mr. Kowalski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, the council file ordinance number 15640, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kow...excuse me, Mr. Mers...Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15640, by ye seven, nay zero, on first reading. That'll take us to new business.
Madam President, I'll make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
Second. Are there any separations?
Yes, number two, under contracts.
All right, moving the balance of the agenda, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. By Mr. Witherspoon, seconded by Ms. Schaff, resolved by the council of the city of Erie that the contract for the 2018 curb and sidewalk replacement, various locations, be and the same is hereby awarded to Mayor Brothers Construction, 1902 Cherry Street, Erie, in the amount of $37,217, and the proper city officials are authorized and directed to sign contract on behalf of the city of Erie. Discussion?
Mrs. President, I just wanted a chance to vote on this, not against the project, I just have a problem with the contractor.
All right, roll call. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Mersky...
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This resolution will adopt six to one. That'll take us to committee reports, Madam President.
We'll start with Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to report that last night was the final championship games of the Summer Basketball League. We registered 280 young men and 42 young ladies. The championship games in four divisions, 9-10, 11-12, 13-14, 15-16, all ended in one-point difference. I want to thank Councilwoman Liz, Councilwoman Kathy for attending, they had the honor of placing the medals on the young men, and presenting them with their trophies. My volunteers and staff was very appreciative that they were there. Also, the mayor stopped by to observe the 9-10 championship game, and he was impressed with the talent of the 9-10 year olds. He also had the opportunity of presenting the trophies and medals along with Mr. Outlaw. So, that capsule, that was a highlight for the folks to see the mayor and council there. A lot of the staff gave a lot of positive comments, because we don't see them. Matter of fact, that might be the first time in many years that folks came, and it was open to the entire city, and... And it was open to the entire city and to other people in the city hall, and we hope that more would come. We had a very good crowd. We estimated about a hundred young men and young women watched the game and doing a few other stupid things while they were there. They riding the bikes on the other court, but the key is they weren't getting in any trouble between 5:15 and 9:30. They weren't causing any problem anywhere in the city. And we want to thank our police department who's there and they didn't have to work, and that's a blessing there. And they enjoyed some of the games a couple of times. I've seen them get out their cars and they got into the game, and that's what community policing is all about. So the league is not all about basketball. It's about community coming together, it's about police-community relationship, it's about keeping young men and young women out of trouble for five, six hours, and we've done our job for 28 years. Thank you.
Kathy Schoff and I were interviewed yesterday by two members of the panel from the Urban Land Institute, former Pittsburgh Mayor Tom Murphy and Lucia Garris, who's from Hillsborough County, Florida. This was a really interesting process because they asked really good, challenging questions about not only how city government functions, but about what we know as council members about vacant properties and blighted properties and the need for housing and what we're going to do with those excess units of housing in Erie. So I think that really follows up with some of the earlier discussion at the podium about affordable housing. Yeah, I think it was really fun, it was like being, I don't know, we had to do our homework ahead of time. We also had a chance on, at the initial reception at the Erie Art Museum, I think it was Monday night, to talk to Stanley Lowe, who's been involved in historic preservation in Pittsburgh, and he has, you know, a great resume, and he also challenged us in talking about housing and, you know, what do we know about the numbers? Where, you know, who's, what's the Erie Housing Authority budget? What's the City of Erie budget? So it was a really good process, so I'm looking forward to seeing their initial report on Friday that they'll be giving. I met with Chris Taylor of the Upper Room to learn more about the Safety Monitor Program. He would like to, as there's been a lot of really good discussion about panhandling and homelessness, and he would like to contribute his ideas on that. Yesterday I attended a brainstorming session about the Friendliness and Cleanliness Campaign in the Renaissance District. It was a really good discussion. They're seeking volunteers to work on the Pocket Park, which is going to be built on State Street, I think it's from 8 to 12 on Saturday morning, and I believe that the city tweeted about the volunteers. Anyhow, there's information somewhere out there about how you can volunteer for this project. I think they need rakes and shovels also. One of the things that struck me was that with having, you know, business people there from downtown, it was a very positive discussion about how do we respond and react to those who are not only homeless, but seniors who live downtown, or low-income people who live downtown. You can't just lump everybody in and say, well, you must be homeless if you're sitting in front of a high-rise building. That's your home, that's kind of your backyard. It was just really good, so I'll keep people informed on that. Because I was there at the Gannon Tech Center, Faith Kindig from the Oasis Market invited me to come in and have a tour there, it's in the old G.C. Murphy's Building. One of her requests though is that she's hoping that they're really trying to have low use or reuse of a lot of things, so she's hoping they can get a recycling bin in front of that market, which will be selling fresh produce. They have contracted with Birch Farms from, I think Northeast is going to be there. They're also going to have refrigeration so that you won't just be able to buy fresh produce, but also eggs and dairy, and they're hoping actually to find a butcher to go in there. I did go to the PennDOT meeting and I agree with Adam Trot that, I think there were 21 people there. It was, I found out about it on Twitter at 4:30, and PennDOT said, I mean, they didn't notify city council members, and I hope that in the future they'll realize that they can notify everybody on city council. One of the things, when I went to Spoons League last night, is that if, there are these great gardens nearby, I mean, it just corn, like, coming up everywhere. It was just really cool to see, to see urban gardens in the backyard of that. I wanted to mention that Footlights Theater is doing crazy for you, I think it's a Gershwin musical, it's free, it's at Strong Vincent. These are students who've been working on this all summer, so it's tonight, Thursday night and Friday night, 7 o'clock, at Strong Vincent Middle School. I went to the program last year, which was at Collegiate, and it just blew me away. So if you have a chance, if you're looking for something to do with all the other stuff going on in Erie, please consider going to Footlights Theater tonight. Somebody, Adam, also mentioned all the cool stuff going on in Erie this weekend, including the Bicycle Fest, the Jazz Festival, and my grade school, St. Andrew's Schools, having an all-school reunion at UPMC Park. And I mentioned that only because on my travels downtown yesterday, I also stopped at the new Chuck and Jenny's, and, you know, the Smith Sisters were part of my, you know, my classmates when I was growing up. What I liked about going to see Chuck and Jenny's at the former Arena Bar, which is now Chuck and Jenny's, at the Arena, whatever it's called, is that next door, there are signs in the buildings there, apartments for lease, restaurant for lease, so you can see how investment in one place yields other benefits.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a few things to report. I attended the mayor's business council. One of the initiatives that they're working on is a cooperative agreement with the county Planning Department using GIS and data from the census and other sources to create a website, both for prospective businesses that are coming into town, but also for businesses that are here and for the city to use itself and the county to use itself to help with data gathering, applying for grants and that type of thing. And they use the model of the City of Seattle, who is already using this software, and some of the things that they've done with it, it was very exciting, and I think that anytime we can cooperate at levels of government, it's important. I attended the Police Athletic League to show my support, not only for our police and sheriff's department and the organizers of the Police Athletic League, but also for the children from Erie's public schools and throughout our city that were participants in this week-long camp. Many people gave of their time, talent, and treasure, including Erie School District teachers, to put this camp on, and it was really neat to see the kids so involved and so engaged, and I just want to give special recognition to Officer Lennox for his work on the Police Athletic League, and everybody who was involved in the Police Athletic League. And I wanted to recognize too, our cap at the Erie Zoo received $2 million to repair the JMC Ice Arena. It was Representative Fabrizio's last cause that he championed, and it was, I was very grateful to Governor Wolf for releasing that money. Had we not received that $2 million, we could have had a blighted piece of property on 38th Street on a main drag, abutting the city golf course, and this will allow it to breathe new life into that facility. And also, all of the people who enjoy ice skating now have the opportunity again to have public ice skating in the City of Erie, which is a good thing for all of our community. And they do it relatively inexpensive up there. It's a cheap way for your, inexpensive way for your family to have a good time. So we thank Governor Wolf and Representative Fabrizio for the $2 million for the JMC Ice Arena. And I just wanted to make one comment. A lot of people, as I listen to the conversation, people are blurring the lines between homelessness and panhandling. Homelessness is a situation, panhandling is a behavior, and we have to make sure that we don't mix the two. Obviously, there's some correlation between the two. However, the ordinance that, you know, I'm talking about or that I'm asking us to have a conversation about is about behavior. It's not about a situation in your life. We're not punishing people because they're homeless. And it's not an either or, it's an and both. We have to help people, but we also have to have clear expectations of what the rules are in our community and what's acceptable and what's not. And no means no. Whether it's sexual assault, whether it's physical assault, any unwanted advance, no means no. And we need to just do this not because we're punishing people, but it's for the greater good of everybody, so that people feel safe downtown. We have a Fortune 500 company right next door. People are getting harassed, testified by one of the citizens to be heard today, a business owner downtown. She didn't say wealthy people, she said elderly people are being harassed. Why? Because they're weak and easy to prey on. This is a problem, we have to deal with it, but it's not an either or, it's not just hammer people. I agree with Liz, I agree with the owner of the restaurant and flower shop downtown. You have to do both. You have to provide help, but you have to have clear expectations of what behaviors are acceptable and unacceptable in your community. So it's not an either or, and I hate that we get so divisive. It's not a divisive issue, it's, we have a problem, we have to work together to solve it. This is just one part of the solution. It's not the only part, it's one part, and we have to be careful that, it's easy to look at other people and say, oh, well, it's the homeless. No, it's not the homeless, it's, the issue is panhandling, whether you're homeless or whether you're not. The issue is unwanted advances. And finally, I just wanted to give my regards again to Representative Fabrizio for all that he's done for this community over the past 16 years and also 20 years before that as county clerk. He was a good friend of the City of Erie and he will be missed. Thank you.
Mr. Witherspoon.
Thank you, Madam President. I forgot to mention, very important gentleman who visited us last night at the courts, and that was Mr. Dave Moverhill, our Public Works Director. And when he hit the court, he was doing more than watching the game, he was working. Mel, you need to get this fixed. Mel, you need to get that fixed. I said, hey, you know, we didn't put it in the budget. Well, you still need to get it fixed, so. So I'll be working with businesses and factories and raising some money to get the things fixed that Dave said I should get fixed, but I want to recognize him, he was present as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. No committee reports this morning. We did have representatives from Pennelect in caucus this morning. One of the main issues, if a streetlight is out, I was contacted and we really didn't have a contact person since our former one passed away unexpectedly, but if there's a streetlight out in your neighborhood, or please feel free to call the city and let them know. If you can possibly get the pole number that's on that streetlight, it'll help the situation a little better and may expedite a little quicker. If you don't get a response that way, please feel free to call any of us council people, we have contact information and we can pass it along. Well, it's a month of, it's a time of festivals. Naturally, numerous festivals coming up this coming month, including Celebrate Erie. Please feel free to take advantage of them, get there, enjoy them, support them. I know EMTA will have different outlets where you can get transportation for free to help get you there if parking is an issue, so please use that, take that to your advantage. One last thing, I did, went to the Last Sounds of Summer at St. Mary's East, not Monday, a week from last Monday, and there's a lady there that says, you know, I see you at the council meeting, I waved to you, I say hi to you, and you never say hi back. So Franny Samalani at St. Mary's East, I just want to wave to you and say hello. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. As the Water Authority Liaison, I attend the water meetings, and the operating expenditures for various departments are all falling within their budgetary constraints, and they are doing fine and looking forward to their big convention coming up in September. And speaking of festivals, I'm going to give a plug for the St. James Festival, which is this weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and the Friday dinner at 5 o'clock, serving, it has Chuck and Jenny's Sauce. We have a pasta dinner, and it actually, Virginia, I think is her name, she's an awesome lady, and she runs our pasta dinner. So very thankful to her, and we have a turkey dinner on Sunday and a polka mask at 11:30, and the turkey dinner on Sunday is at noon. So that's a great time, it's on Erie's east and wonderful side, right near Wesleyville on Buffalo Road. People have been talking to me, calling me concerning animal issues, and we do have ordinances about animals, so I'm going to read you a little bit. "No person shall own, harbor, or keep in custody any animal which disturbs, interferes, or otherwise deprives the peace, quiet, rest, or sleep of any person within the city by such animal making any loud or harsh noise or disturbance. Continuous barking, howling, or making of other loud noises by such animal for more than 15 minutes time period, which periods occur on two or more consecutive days or nights, shall be deemed to disturb the peace, quiet, rest, sleep, and to cause the annoyance and discomfort of persons in the city." So we do have ordinances about animals. If you know your neighbor and can talk with your neighbor, I think that would be the best motive first, and, but if you do have a continuing problem, we do have animal enforcement that can come and talk to that person. I talked with some people who were from out of town, on Roar on the Shore, someone came in from California and was meeting a friend from Florida, and they loved Erie, they loved everything that they did. So welcome to all the visitors coming into Erie this summer. We've had a really good weather summer, so it's going great that way. I've been a little help with the Summer of Hope, I only went twice, but it really was an eye-opener and the people were very receptive. I am still looking for a human, Erie County Human Relations Advisory Board, that's open until August 8th, taking applications, and thankful to Andy Steimetz, who has that up for me on the Erie website and on Facebook. So I am going to be appointing someone shortly and get those applications in if you are interested, and it's a voluntary position, and it's also a non-voting position for the Advisory Board. I welcome the Urban Land Institute people to Erie. Their biographies are so impressive, so I'm looking forward to hearing and meeting with them to see what they have to say on Friday. Thankful to all the organizations- Thankful to all the organizations that have flowers blooming on the street corners. Beautiful. There are certain areas of Erie, the East Avenue, Wayne Park area, has beautiful flowers there, and I can't remember who does it, but great job, because flowers bring me happiness. Have a great day. Thank you.
Yes, I want to apologize for not being there last meeting, but that's the casualty you face when your kids all move out of town. So I've been gone for a couple of weeks and didn't have a chance to do some observations. I want to say that I would have supported Councilman Murzky's resolution on panhandling. It's why I was glad to sign on to it as a co-sponsor. It's not being insensitive, and it's not being mean-spirited, but I have worked downtown for, since I was 19 years old, and that's literally the truth. I have worked in parking ramps. I have done security in parking ramps. I have worked downtown in the private sector, in the government sector. I know, I've listened to the complaints from the people that work with me in City Hall, from the various people that worked with me in the private sector, and from the people that complained to me while I was a member of the Parking Authority. And the problem seemed to start when, way back when the city of Erie didn't know what to do with their downtown, and we took advantage of federal funds, and we moved all the social agencies downtown. Few cities that I have toured have that same problem, and because of that, everything is centered downtown. Now, there was no public outrage three, four years ago, or I think I'm pretty accurate, when we moved the buses off State Street. And we never did tell the reason why we did that, but it doesn't take any kind of genius to figure out why that was. It was complaints from certain businesses that didn't like what was happening on State Street, so we moved the problem to French and other streets. Not a bit of outrage from the media, not a bit of outrage from the social agencies, not a bit of outrage from the newspaper. Nothing. We just moved the buses. There was a little comment, and life went on. But we moved them for that reason. That's the reason we moved them off there. There was one company in particular, and one person, I don't want to name them publicly, but they were responsible for moving the buses off State Street. No other town does that. You know, along with the root causes, I think what Councilman Murzky was trying to say was that in those instances where you have professional panhandlers, and there are some, I've been around and seen them, and when you get aggressively pursued, it's another tool in the box of the police department. I talked to police officers who said, "There's an unwritten rule that, you know, you don't bother them, you kind of, you know, let them go, and that's okay if that's what our policy is." But they don't even realize if they have a tool to take advantage of if they had to. So many times I read about, "We have this ordinance and that ordinance." For years, we thought we had a farm ordinance, but we didn't, until Councilman Thompson passed it. But for years, everybody thought we had one. Same thing with panhandling. We have a public nuisance one, but for those instances where we may need one, like the other day, you know, where you had a guy at Roar on the Shore, I was reading, was taking advantage of the situation, that would be a good reason why to have a punitive measure. Sure, we're not going to throw people in, into prison or into jail that don't have the money, but we need to solve the problem. I just came back from Chicago, third-largest city, and I was amazed that in Maggie Daley Park and all the other parks with my grandkids, I could actually sleep, not sleep, excuse me, I could actually sit on the park benches. I was not hassled much at all during the whole trip there. I don't know how they do it. I talked to a few of them, and it's basically education on how to spot problems, and how to ask them to quietly move along, and how they work with them as long as they don't bother, you know, various people. Like Councilman Murzky said, we are into a strange time in Erie, where we have support from the private sector, and we plan on changing this community in ways that we've never done. We want people to come downtown and live here. And you have to ask yourself, would you want your wife, would you want your family, to have to put up with every day being, you know, panhandled, walked around? People tell me all the time, they want to go to the theater, they want to have a nice time, go get a dinner, and then go home. They don't want to have to race to their cars. And I know that when I was, when I was working in the parking sector. I seen it. So it's not being insensitive, but we got to find out, we got to work with people and find a solution. But we, at the same time, you can't have your center part of your city the way it exists now. As far as CBAs go, and I'm a supporter of them, you got to remember that Erie is only 280,000 people, and you can't do the same things you do in Pittsburgh with the same amount of pressure. But there are things we should learn from those cities, and we need to, may I have two minutes? We may need to just have to modify the way we approach it, because people aren't dying to do business in Erie. They have to be cautious, like Nick Scott. Took him 20 years to actually move forward, and he'll tell you the reasons. So I think we're on the right track. We just can't push as hard as some people want that they do in other cities. And finally, to Councilman Schaff's complaint about farm animals, I'm, I'm getting a lot of complaints about chickens and other farm animals in the city. Now, we have an ordinance against it, but there seems to be, and people have told me, there's a disconnect between code enforcement, interpretation of the ordinance, and what's happening. People are telling them that they're grandfathered in. To me, and I'm not an attorney, don't pretend to be one, I've only had 16 credit hours of law, but I think grandfathered means if you were there before the law was passed. And right now, we're having issues where people say, "Well, I'm grandfathered in," and it's getting to be, you know, we're not Hooterville, and we're not Farmville. This is Erie, Pennsylvania, and people do not like being woke up to chickens, having goats running around. And, I mean, I agree with you, Councilman Schaff. I think, you know, we have to decide, you know, who's interpreting these things the wrong way, but if I hear any more complaints, I'm going to have to bring them up to you, because I don't believe that was the intent of what council passed, was grandfathered in, okay? And I can show you numerous chicken factories around town. But, and that's my comments for today, and I thank you, members of council.
Madam President, I'm sorry. May I thank Mr. Witherspoon for his 28 years of doing the Spoons League? I forgot to mention that in my report. I had never been to that court, and I apologize for that, because I like basketball, and I should have made the effort in previous years to come. That was just awesome and amazing, what I saw yesterday. I'm going to have that memory in my heart, because you really had those kids having a great time, and everything was under control, and it was beautiful. So they may aspire to better things and play in leagues well beyond Erie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Witherspoon, for your dedication to the kids. You know, if we keep them busy, we'll keep them out of trouble, and that's a sure way to keep them busy, playing ball. So I'd like to thank you, too. And with that said, I had the pleasure of meeting with Diana Ames and Bill, the Director of the Mental Health Association, and we talked about the panhandling issue. We talked about the homelessness issue, and we know there's an issue. And the reason why we voted for the panhandling was not to find the individuals, but to start a bigger conversation about what's going on out here. They need help. There's a lot of agencies out here that can help them, but we all need to get on the same page. We're going to be having a study session coming up to sit down and meet with them and several other people who can help the city become involved in this, too, because it affects all of us. It's affecting our businesses, our citizens, and we all have to have a hand in resolving the problem. So it's not to punish the people or fine the people, it's to get the help that they need, so they'll be able to go, be able to find an apartment, afford an apartment, and get them off the street begging. So whatever we can do to help them, that's what we want to do. So the city, we, we definitely want to play a part in helping. And with that said, Teresa, you have anything?
I don't have any to report this week.
Susan?
I have just a little bit of good news and bad news, depending on how you want to look at it. The school tax bills are in the mail.
That's bad. Is that it?
That's it.
Renee?
Good morning. I just have three things. A lot of what I was going to talk about has already been mentioned. A couple of things I want to highlight that we'll actually be talking about more tomorrow in the press conference are the Trinity Celebration, Trinity Center Celebration of Summer, which will be happening Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Bethesda Center. And again, we'll be talking about that more tomorrow. We'll have George Trauner with us to kind of give some insight as to what that celebration is all about, but it's free to the families and the children. Also, Serbiri is this weekend. They'll be working Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 8:00 to noon and 1:00 to 5:00. If anybody still wants to volunteer, there's still time. They'll be focusing on Pfeiffer Burley Elementary School and on the Booker T. Washington Center, making renovations and repairs to those two facilities. And we're looking forward to seeing hundreds of people working together to improve, to improve those. Also, Jim Winarski mentioned about the streetlights being out, and to call the city, the number would be 870-1111. That's the Citizen Response Center, and then MOZ can get that information to the appropriate people to take care of those lights. And then finally, Celebrate Erie, as was mentioned, is coming up soon. We're, we're quickly trying to wrap up details, but I just wanted to emphasize again that this year, except for the three national headliners on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, the event is really going to be hyper-local this year. There will be all local music, local food, local art, local businesses, local vendors, even local food trucks this year. And at the end, during the event and at the end of the event, we will actually be conducting a survey to find out more in regards to what people want to see with Celebrate Erie in future years, and also to try to measure the economic impact of Celebrate Erie, to give us better data going forward. So that's all I have for today. Thank you.
I have nothing.
All right. We'd like to thank you all for coming out, and that adjourns our city council.
City Council adjourns at 10:09. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Potowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarski, Mr.